Public Schools Meeting in order. Everything about this, anything about tonight's meeting can be called on at rockridgepublicschools.org or tonight's agenda will be at the table at this time. Looks like we have a full board here tonight. At this time, I would ask everybody to please rise and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Looks like we have no, you know, I will ask for, what, at this time, additions and additions and deletions, I have a couple that were just brought to me. 4.9 on the second, 4.9. Paige Johnson is to be looking for hire at the Laurentian Elementary. So Paige Johnson should be moved up to 4.8.
No, she's in the wrong spot.
Paige is not 4.9, Paige Johnson would go up to 4.8. So in other words, she's going to be working at the Laurentian. Okay, 412, the hire of Maria Joebert, she wants her date of hire to be effective today.
Which number?
412, from the 18th to 11th.
Okay. Okay, and just a little side note on 511, Mr. Speltz will be giving a little report just before John Seristo, just to let you know.
There's five, one, two, three.
It'll be 5.1, 5.1, not three, 5.1.
5.11.
Oh, you said 5.11, okay.
5.1.
One.
5.1. Willie will be giving a short report just before John Seristo.
Okay, three.
Additions and deletions.
Have a nice.
Good.
I'd like a quick discussion on two items. On, on the day we get our board packets, we've been talking about that for a long time, and then maybe get closer to superintendent evaluation, how we're going to do that. And then I, I would think it'd be appropriate to have a moment of silence because it's 7/11 today. 9/11?
9/11.
What's that?
9/11.
You know what I meant.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just take a moment of silence for the victims 22 years ago today. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So you want to discuss, over to try the superintendent's evaluation.
Yeah, we've been talking about it for a long time, and we don't want to evaluate anything. We probably need to set goals and objectives, and we have something to measure by. And we could talk maybe a little bit later about, you know, if we'll evaluate. I know that I still think I had some principal feedback, Noel, and some, I don't know what else, you know. So anyhow, we've been talking about it. And then our board packets, and things have kind of settled down, and it's kind of hard to get a board packet on a Friday and come to a meeting on a Monday. We talked about ours on a Thursday, and we had a Tuesday meeting to help to get our board packets on a Thursday, because over the weekend, there's really nothing, you know, no business that you can do on a weekend, but as far as business hours and business days.
And you've made this request before, and we have tried, but we're 60% bigger than Evlith Gilbert was, so it's very difficult for us to get things done before Friday at noon. So if you tell me you absolutely 100%, one thing's Thursday at noon, then you just have to accept the fact that you're going to be adding a whole bunch of things to the agenda on Monday morning.
We don't want to do that.
Well, excuse me.
You know, but there are bigger districts that some have their packets on Wednesdays for a Monday meeting, so.
True, but even bigger districts aren't, haven't just consolidated, they're not building three buildings, they're not moving new curriculum around. It's still more complicated here than in even a significantly larger district.
And you can get it online at noon or when it's posted, so.
You can, and what's unusual, in this, we have more than two board members who want to pack, who want them printed out, and that takes a lot of time. Stacy spends hours trying to pick, and that's another thing that slows it down.
But, but the thing is, I think I know who those board members are, and I do get emails from them, so they do use their computer, so if they want to look at it, they can look at it until they get their paper, as far as what my thought pattern is.
Friday is still Friday. We even talked about this when we had MSBA come up, at that little, that almost the board thing, and so I find it difficult.
So when it comes to the board packets, Noel, we'll have a discussion on that, or we can have it at the table, then we'll try to fine tune it till we can get it, possibly get them out by Thursday night, Thursday afternoon.
Okay, yes, we can do it, as long as the board understands you're going to be getting a lot more packets and information on the day.
You don't, Mr. Chair, you want to start adding things the day of the meeting?
Right.
Before it's posted to the public, and then after it's posted, adding things, because then the public may think that you're trying to pull equipment on it.
So would it be possible to get the, one on the tablet, done by Thursday?
I mean, that would be fine, as long as it's online.
It's always online, once we, once we publish it. So, I mean, there's still, you're still going to be adding things on Monday.
Okay.
But I don't think we should.
We'll try.
I don't see how.
Let's, let's have, put it down and have discussion that.
Yes, I'll do it twice.
Right. Okay, so with that, can I get, can I include the agenda?
So moved as amended.
By Director Rude, support.
Second.
Second by Director Calvert-Dahl, any discussion? Aye by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. We have no visitor input tonight. Consent agenda has changed.
Make a motion to accept consent agenda as amended.
Motion by Director Yohan, supported by Director Lager, any discussion? Favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So, item 5, report 5.1.
I think we should skip that one right now, don't you?
We're on a roll.
Oh, he was already on his way up.
I knew that was coming, I figured I'd cut it off at the pass. Thank you, it's worth it. Great news, it's been a while in the making. Thank you a thousand times to Essentia, they have donated five fully functional hospital beds to our CNA lab at Rock Ridge High School. This is a huge donation, huge, you have no idea, you may, pardon me, saves us a ton of money, and we are forever grateful for this donation. Could very easily be some form of a $30,000 to $40,000 donation in the long run, so thank you, Essentia. And there, plus in, they're working, they're everythinging, so we're very excited about that in our CNA class. Mark Winter, nice job of getting that CNA class up and running. It was a late start, because we just didn't have an instructor, and we got an instructor, well done, Mark, and the kids are in there, and people are taking, if you can, more is adding kids to that class. A lot of excitement in the medical world that we're doing this at Saffron Avenue. Our kids at the end of the semester will be eligible to fully test for a CNA license.
All right.
Partnering with Minister of Health Kathy Berdach, and we appreciate everything she is doing along the way also, so thank you to everyone involved with that. We're off to, I see Mr. Strasser here, we're off to St. Scholastica on Tuesday, Wednesday, during the early out. Mr. Strasser may be joining us if he can fit it into his schedule, I know he's got other plans, but he did express an interest of, he's down there, I appreciate that, he's on some other things. And Todd Ufford and I are going to St. Scholastica to look at the anatomage machine. I just picked a short demonstration for you today, this is absolutely, as Noel would say, a total game changer. Go ahead.
I've seen one, and it's super cool.
It is, yeah.
Yeah.
It's not, it's the.
Check in on sound. Want to start it over, please? We're going to give it a quick restart. Here we go.
Students and faculty can rotate virtual and cadaver bodies about 360 degrees. Gross anatomy slides allow students and faculty to visualize full body structures.
You could see how they're moving it with their finger there, the person on the left.
A digital image library consists of more than 1,000 medical conditions via real human cadaver MRI scans. Students can visualize and interact with cases such as pulmonary embolisms, brain aneurysms, Dissections can be made along the median, frontal, perisagittal, and transverse planes
So what you saw there was the anatomage, anatomy imaging.
There's one simple hearing hack anyone can use.
So, we're going to check it out at Scholastica, it's the size of probably that table right there, Brandy and Tim, maybe a little longer.
Little longer.
And it's a, it's a real human cadaver that they have digitized. Someone who has donated their body to science, and they've digitized it, and you take the scalpel and slice, and you spread it open, and you look, and you take the 360, and you keep going, you press right here, it tells you exactly what it is. It'll tell you all the origin points, everything that it does, it's, it's absolutely incredible, so know that that's a direction we're heading, more information to come on that, and stay tuned.
Super cool.
Yeah, that is, that's going to be a game changer in our Anatphys stuff and working with our CNA labs. They also have, I didn't show it tonight, because I know how busy you guys are, and Stacy told me, tonight's a short meeting, don't extend it. They also have one for animals, that will come with our purchase that they're, that we have a quote on, that will come with our purchase, so our science labs can use it. Super awesome, watch for that. We'd be the only high school north of, I mean, Hinkley for sure, north of Forest Lake, there's just not many. This is where it's at right now. So Mike, thanks for doing that, I appreciate it. This will put our kids at a huge advantage when it comes to Anatphys studies, body systems, all the skeletal, muscular, and cardiovascular, et cetera. Let's see, I think that is it for now. Next up, I want to introduce you, John Seristo, he is in charge of what our 3D, 360 degree tours of the alt buildings, and at a meeting prior to this, you guys, for him to start Evlith, you guys paused, because you had questions about, well, who owns it, or who doesn't own it? Do you remember that? Anybody kind of remember that? Okay, so ask John about that tonight. John, we talked about that, and you can let him know that you're hosting right now, but eventually it's just ours when everything's done, right? All right, John Seristo, thank you, I'm done then, when John's done, you guys will be moving on.
Thank you, Willie.
Thanks, Willie.
Thanks again for having me. I want to keep it real, real simple, and show you what I've been doing with your spaces. It's been, been really fun actually to get access to some of the areas, and some of the little lifts and crannies of the different buildings. What I'll start with, I can show you what I've done so far with the Virginia piece, but I have started Evlith a little bit to get some of that done, and it was a good chance to get it done with those students in there. So I can show you the better, the highlights of the spaces that we have so far. So like Goodman, this is the Shang one, I'd better like to show everyone. Virginia itself, the whole school, Roosevelt took, he was on a special camera that essentially allowed me to capture everything in a beautiful space, to show that, kind of really the glory and the beauty of what Goodman was, and be able to show people up close from the balcony and the different spaces that maybe they sat at, to be able to see the, you know, the whole entire space, it still looks the way it was, and gives you a virtual space that exists that will always be there if we wanted to be, and be able to use. There were students actually in the, in the group when I was, when I was doing this section of the building, but this allows the preservation of that space as well as the, one space here. I'll show you the gymnasiums, which are very interesting, they are all torn apart.
Because of the speed of all of us sudden, us having to get out, we raced John in there, so this is really kind of cool, it ends up to be kind of cool.
It connects to Goodman too, that's the interesting, you know, the kind of, the direction of the building and everything, so if we come back up here, we can see the whole space, and there's one big gymnasium that connects together, but we can see all that, this is Goodman back down this way, so we'd be able to connect that space together. But I just thought it was so, so neat to have the, I think it was a hippodrome that you have, or something, a slanted floor that allowed people to go around, either run faster, they rode bikes, I don't know what they were doing there, but it was really cool looking space, and that was.
If you look, you can see the windows are out. That's why it's so light in there. We never saw that as people who went to school there. Some people might have seen chicken wire windows in there at one time, but eventually they put insulation in those windows that we never saw, but now the windows are out when John finally got in there.
Yeah, this is the first time I had to worry about wind mechanics, because the wind was coming in so fast from the side here, it was probably 30, 40 mile across, cross went through the building, so. But you got the old clock, you can be able to see everything in kind of as it was, and it's, you know, being torn down now, so we don't have this opportunity anymore. But this space is really cool, I like that one as well, but it'll join together with all the different pieces of Virginia. But then we have Evlith, which I've been running around trying to get it done, I tried to get the whole place done for you, honestly, but the biggest problem was it just time-wise, and I want to make sure it looks right, it works correctly. Evlith, I've got the old section on Jones Street, and that's the main part of the building, I had put the bear as the first, because I love it, but I was able to get the old sections of the building so far, where we can see kind of the first levels and the second levels, there's different levels each, each one I had to like break apart, so maybe there were things to do. But the coolest thing is I was able to, in the auditorium, was able to go into here, and then connect over to the whole classroom, and be able to take back to the set, how to build the sets, and where people probably did a lot of the work that they did for each play, we can move up and have a, show people what that looked like, and go to the sound board, the sound grew itself, and see, I guess this is the memories that I think that people want to see, is like, I remember when I worked in this space, and I was in this room, you can kind of see the whole stage from here, and be able to, you know, remember what that kind of felt like. And then also go into the next section here.
Those silver faces were from my prom. Yeah. Yep. Long time.
I love all the old proms.
1991 or 1992.
By the way, you both have intention for writing your names on the walls.
So like shots like this, I try to make sure I get these ones, these are kind of the, really the glory shots of the whole space to show, you know, folks that interacted with it, people remember that, what it was like, and how it felt to them. The school itself needs some more work, I've got about half of it done in Evlith so far, but I wanted to kind of get it out, get it out there, done as quickly as possible, so we don't miss anything with the deconstruction of the building, so that's, that's what I've been working on, I think we're at a quarter, 50 pictures so far with Evlith, probably take about that, maybe more to get the rest.
How many pictures? Not 400.
450, 450 total, but that's, it actually takes six pictures times nine, so it's more like about 5,000 pictures taken so far.
That's kind of cool, when he gives me that stat.
It takes everything and glues it together in the cloud, so it makes it kind of the model that you see, so. But that's, that's where I'm at with it. Gilbert spaces also, I have the gymnasiums and the old sections of the building that aren't there anymore for Gilbert as well, that came out really well. I'm going to have the Evlith manual arts building, we go with this space, that would be essentially all together in one area.
Todd, did you get, did you get the Gilbert campus auditorium and all that other stuff yet?
I can come back there real quick, if you want to see it. The Gilbert auditorium is just really amazing, I thought, compared to, you know, the Virginia one, it was actually really good, so. Here's Gilbert School, it does have a couple of spaces to glue together, but this was about five or six trips, I think, total, and it gave me the, kind of really the overall look of the school. All right, so this one, I was going to incorporate outside pictures too, so that you can actually walk out the door in some spaces. Here, so we have, in this area, front of the school. You see the outside, I picked a good data, make sure you got the outside picture, so we got that, the kind of really, the money of the building and how it looked as it was, and as, you know, some of the sections where they were. So it was really pretty, you know, overall, and it was a nice fall day too, because that worked out well. So then we can walk right into the building, move in, Gilbert. So that's kind of essentially what I did, just to make it more entertaining, I guess, and then, you know, fund it to use for Willie's purposes and whatnot, so the auditorium is just, really just the.
You got your first kiss.
Yeah, just, they didn't have a lot of lighting in that space, but it was really just, it seems very elegant actually in that area, so that's more, good lighting, ambient lighting for the building, so.
Do you have a camera like the Google Earth car?
It's similar, yes, my camera has three cameras that shoot down, three straight out and three up, and it turns six times, so it's 54 pictures turning around every time I do that, and then I take that times, like Roosevelt was 1,500, so that was 1,500 times nine, so it's about 10,000 there, so I'll be there, I think something like that, 11,000.
That's that kind of figure.
It takes a little while thinking of how to make it right, so.
Neat.
Very good.
Questions for John about hosting, someone better roll into that, so we don't extend your.
Yeah, I think, I think the question came up at our last board meeting by one of the board members, I don't know who it was, it might have been Director Sorkin that asked, who owns this after you are, after we pay you?
Wasn't that the last meeting?
To give you, no, 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 many meetings ago.
Essentially, essentially, you own the model, I'm just, I'm hosting it now to this point, to be able to give it to you essentially. The licensing of it overall, you know, when it's your space, we can do different things with it, but I suggested to Willie was to put into a game engine similar to Fortnite, and those ones that we all see, the kids are all playing now, we could put it into that game engine and have Gilbert, Evlith, Virginia all together in one virtual space, and so you could walk to each one of them in your VR headset, we go a little future that Willie was talking there, so there's, there's some real benefits to even just on a device like this, and for alumni, and for donation purposes.
The question that came up, I remember it specifically, was, we were going to, we had like a $500 or $600 host fee, and it was going to be an annual payment, and we didn't know if that was in perpetuity, or if it was going to somehow end, and we were going to eventually host it, or?
Yeah, the functionality of this model is kind of like hosted on the server, on the, on the cloud-based server that it is right now, if we pull that out and put it into the game engine, then it doesn't need this to do that hosting piece for you, so like, it really benefits you to create, to help me, help me create that space for you, because then it's just a standalone, you know, space, we don't, we wouldn't be adding anything to it, because the buildings are torn down, and a lot of them are gone now, so it would just be a static kind of virtual world for the old Rock Ridge schools.
No annual fees after that?
No, that would be your.
That'd be the, that's, he's talking Greek to me.
There's no annual.
John, you got to keep it simple.
Simple, Seristo, that's what I keep trying to remember. The biggest thing is this, it would, if we pull it out of the, pull the data off of the cloud, that would put it into the, into a game essentially is what it would be for the kids.
Which will be ours forever.
Yes.
There you go.
Okay, super, excellent work, thank you.
Beautiful.
Any questions?
Yes, members of the board, at the time that this was last brought up, there was a monetary proposal, so you are going to need to vote at some point for this gentleman to finish their project, and also to get paid, so you can wait, and we can pick that up on the next meeting, but just so you know, you.
Some action is.
You will have to do action to have this gentleman finish.
So we'll put that on the next.
We'll put it on the next agenda.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Good job.
I had to know your school's a lot better, so.
That'd be our thing. So up next is the Treasury report.
I'll make a motion to accept the Treasury report as presented.
Motion by Director Yohan.
Support.
By Director Rude to accept the Treasury report as presented. Any discussion? Favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
5.3 Rock Ridge High School Principal's report, Mr. Winter, you're up.
Can't wait to hear how the start of the year is going.
Good evening, and thanks for letting me join you this evening. Obviously, it's, it's been kind of a whirlwind, a lobbying segment around the opening of the high school, and all in all, things have really gone very well. We started our weeks with our workshop week, obviously, with Project Based Learning Training, that went on for three days with our staff, and a little apprehension going into it, but I think really by the end of that first day, the staff started to really feel and see how valuable it was, and it really was a very great training. When you end the training after three days, you are ready to go with a very solid project that you can implement really just about right away, so, so that was a great training for us. From there, that Thursday of that week, we moved right into our open house, which we did quite differently than years past. We started, basically had it all day long, and took care of all the little things that normally happen during the first week or so of school, and we put it into open house day, so we took pictures, we had the photographer there, we handed out iPads, handed out schedules, took care of all of the forms. Obviously, it was new for a lot of students, so they were able to find their lockers, find their classrooms, all of those types of things, and I'm very, very impressed, we had 74% of 7th graders, their families show up, and overall, we had nearly 90% of all students show up that day. I know it's a little bit of an inconvenience during the daytime, but, but really a tremendous turnout, by far better than, than most turnouts you ever get, trying to bring people into the building, so, so it was really, it was busy and solid for anyone who was around the area, it was a steady stream of people for the seven hours that we held, so, so that was, that was very, very exciting, and really a good way, I think, to get everybody kind of excited for the start of the week. And then, which led right into the first week of school, and obviously, thanks to you all as well, we did kind of a soft start, where we brought in just our sophomores through seniors that first day, and really, most of that day was a lot of culture building, a lot of explaining what rules were, different things of that nature, going through, from how to go through the lunch line, to all of those types of things, that, that everything is new for all of us, so it was nice to have a little bit smaller population that first day, and then obviously, moving right into the second day with the 7th, 8th, 9th graders, and then after that, bringing in the whole, the whole group on Thursday. But that whole week, we did, it was a different week. We did not touch the curriculum at all that first week, everything was really getting kids acclimated to the building, figuring out how you behave in these areas, all of those, those types of things, all of the little things that you need to do to create a good climate and culture in the building, and that's what we really wanted to establish and get started from day one, rather than just throwing everybody together and starting, starting in the classrooms, really to build it. Then we ended the week with a pep rally. Then we ended the week with a pep rally on Friday afternoon, and Mr. Bell, he has a lot of energy and did a great job in the gym. And really, that was the first true time where our entire student body was together in the same room. And I don't know if you saw the picture, but some very cool pictures of the entire student body that seventh hour in the gym. So very, very neat day. Through the start of the school, obviously, last year, we talked a lot about the lasts of the last and between the two buildings that were closing. And then we've really, we've hit all the first now running, you know, the first days of school. We've had the first pep rallies, obviously. We've had the first volleyball game, the first swim meet, the first football game, all of which has had just tremendous crowds, tremendous community support. I don't know how many of you drove by or were at the first football game, but the stands were absolutely packed. We did have enough parking for everyone, so that was exciting to see as well. Which kind of leads me into the parking. I know the parking lot has been a hot topic for probably the last five or six weeks, and I'm very happy to say we still have five passes before we reach what we said was our cap. So we, obviously, we have enough parking spaces for kids. If you come any time during the day, there are plenty of spaces to park still. When we have some PSEO kids off campus, we've only sold enough parking slots. If every student was to come on campus at the same time, driving their car, that purchased a pass, they would all fit. Obviously, they're not all here at the same time. Most of the time, the parking lot behind us here, behind the admin building, has, I don't know, actually, maybe 10 to 20 cars at best of the 100 spots that are open. So there are places to park. So rest assured, hopefully, we can rest on that a little bit and not worry about parking for a while. A few things coming up. Ninja Anywhere is coming next Monday, so the 18th. It's kind of a fun day to bring in a portable ninja course that are coming onsite. And every hour, we'll have a different grade go through, and every student will have the opportunity to go through the ninja course if they would like. So just kind of a fun team-building day. And then, believe it or not, it's going to come very fast, but homecoming is the week of September 25th through the 29th, so the last week of September, as we are making those plans currently. And just all in all, I do want to say, and I can't thank the staff enough, there was a tremendous amount of work put into last week in making sure that students feel comfortable, that they are acclimated, and the teaching staff did a fabulous job. And just, you know, we've said all along that it's all new, and it's all new for everyone. It's new for the staff, it's new for all students. We're going to have issues, but we're going to get through them and we're going to make it great. So, you know, be patient with us. We told our students day one, things don't work great, come talk to us. We'll figure it out, we'll make it better, because there are things that are just not going to quite work right, because you can't think of everything. But all in all, I do believe and I feel it was a huge success. We had great turnouts with everything we did, and it heard very good feedback along the way. With that, any questions?
Good job.
Great job.
Great job on the open house you had. I came here, I think you might have saw me, I was taking my son through the school, you know, wanted to see it. He was, actually, he wished he was back. He wishes he was back in school.
Yeah, mine said the same thing. Mine said the same thing. I went to the football game on this past Friday, and you guys did a great job flagging people, showing them where to go, so it was easy to get in and out. Thank you.
And Lisa and I visited today, as you know, and I was just so impressed and just, there was so much positivity. I didn't see any kid, we went during lunch, it was the seventh graders, they all behaved well, and what I noticed is that there was hardly any, they threw away all their garbage. I was just kind of surprised by that, they're seventh graders. And I noticed throughout the building that there was just lots of positivity. I talked to the hall monitor and he said, you know, just he can't even believe it, how well the kids are behaving and doing, and it's kind of almost like a more mature atmosphere there. I also liked the light in there. I didn't even think about it, but somebody made the comment that they felt happier in the last two weeks instead of feeling closed in because there's so much light, and that I think is important, especially for, you know, northern Minnesota in the winter. You want to add anything or? Yeah.
I was just listening to you, so I don't know.
A lot of positivity, a lot of excitement, and that was just really fun to feel and to be there, so.
It seems like all the kids are getting along and, you know, there's not anybody over in a corner by themselves, so that was good to see. Also, one of the concerns that I had was above the lunch area, where you have the science, you know, people being distracted and looking down. They were not, they were paying attention to their teacher, so that was good to see. Yeah.
Yeah, it was a very positive experience, so thank you.
We did see the beds. I noticed the beds, so that was, you know, healthcare is my background, so that was kind of fun to see, so.
That looks like a real CNA classroom now.
Yeah.
Really add a lot.
Are we going to add parking passes available? I mean, there's probably 100 spots every day. I hate to not have any more parking passes than have all those spots empty all the time. We have a bunch of sophomores getting their driver's licenses or something, or day passes or something, or do something so they can park there. I don't.
Yeah.
Wait and see approach, I guess, but I hate to say, no, we don't have any more passes than have all these empty spots.
Maybe some of the open enrolled kids might want to come here and, you know, drive from wherever.
I had heard that kids getting their license that are not quite 16 had bought passes.
I think that's part of the reason for our empty parking lots. We did have some that.
That's what I had.
Yeah, purchased some. And I did look at the numbers. I believe we've had right around 80 or so sophomores purchase parking passes, so about a third of the sophomore class. And I can't believe that they're all 16 yet.
And that nobody, and nobody's parking in the 1404 lot at all?
No.
So, I mean, there's still that overflow available, so maybe adding some passes if need be down the line, it would be a thing to do. It's a good ploy. Dad, Mom, I already bought my parking pass. You got to buy me a car now.
Okay, thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
Good job.
Mark.
Up next is the superintendent reports and stuff.
Thank you, Director Addy. Couple of things for the board I put in here, and I know you get these from MSBA, but just there's a bunch of trainings coming up, and part of the reason I put them, so the audience also knows that you too go back to school. And you also, just like the students, have trainings and workshops that you can attend to, and I believe all of you have attended various workshops, some have attended multiple, multiple workshops on all sorts of different topics, because being on a board is hard. Sometimes people from the armchair of their living room think it's easy to sit where you are and make decisions that everybody is happy with. It's not. So there's trainings available. The public, I think, needs to know that you do go to training, you do get extra help, because this is a tough job. And you are not paid for doing this. Well, I guess you get a little bit, but just letting everybody know about the school board training and opportunities. Second thing I want to let you know about, yes, please evaluate me. I love to get evaluated, so have at it.
And I will work with Tim to get, I will work with him to get that evaluation.
MSBA.
MSBA that we used, everybody in a timely manner. Okay?
Because fair is fair. Teachers get evaluated, fair is clerical, everyone gets evaluated, so it's very fair for you to evaluate me.
Well, it's in the contract too.
It is.
It's in your contract.
Right, but I think the last time I was evaluated was about five years ago.
Yeah, that's not fair to you either.
So.
Right.
Next thing on the superintendent's report is, just to let you know, is this is very, very early. Normally, this is projected enrollment versus actual enrollment. These came from the principals, and you can see the numbers there. I'll talk about them in case you're watching. I'll say them out loud if you're watching online. But Spencer always does a budget. He bases the budget on X number of students, and he based the total budget on 2,248 students. And this is a process you agreed to at the end of June. You adopted the official budget. So as, now, we have to work through a bunch of things, because we still have students adding and dropping. Thank you, Mike. So these numbers are going to shift, they're going to change, and we do know, in the high school, we do tend to lose kids as the year goes on. However, the good news is, is that you are no longer declining enrollment. In fact, you have 40 kids here more than what you budgeted for. Parkview is almost exactly the same. It's down one student from what we had budgeted for. North Star is down 12 students. That's not surprising necessarily, because that also is the building that will be finished, so those kids will be moving back to Virginia. And based upon what we've seen so far, I believe you're going to have some of those parents come back. Once the North Star officially is open in Virginia, those students, you're going to have some students coming back. Laurentian, we're seeing exactly what you had hoped you would see. We're up 23 based upon what we're budgeted, and these are not Virginia kids who necessarily used to attend Parkview and then all of a sudden shifted to Laurentian. Some of those, that has already occurred, and there's a couple, there's a small handful there. These are students who are coming from other districts. These are students who are coming from parochial schools. These are students who are coming from elsewhere. They want to be at Laurentian. In the high school, they are up 30 students over what we had projected for enrollment. This is the one that's probably going to change the most, because legally, before we drop a kid, we need to wait 15 days, then we can drop them. But long story short, we believe we're going to be higher in the high school. And that is occurring anecdotally. It's exactly what you were hoping would happen. People are seeing the high school and they're going, wow. I have yet to hear someone say, boy, you really built this high school terribly. It looks awful. Where did you get this design from? Out of a Crackerjack box? Haven't heard a single person say anything like that. And so what's happening is people are seeing the high school, they're walking through the high school, and they're making decisions. You've picked up some kids from other districts, because kids have gone in there and they want to be there. Yes, you've picked up parochial kids, you've picked up some other kids, because they want to be in the high school. So this does help your budget a little bit. So the good news is, right off the cuff here, and we'll give you some more firm numbers as time goes on, but it looks pretty good. As far as we, you have stopped going down, which is kind of what the progression was over the last three years or so.
This doesn't include pre-K numbers, correct? That's.
There are, pre-K numbers are not in here.
That's what I thought.
So those, that's something else, and I just wanted, because you don't necessarily get much revenue from pre-K, if any at all from pre-K.
Is PSEO included? I'm thinking it's not.
PSEO is not included in here, because we know we'll have some kids who will go PSEO.
Okay. These are great numbers.
So Noel, do you happen to know what our total ADM was like at the end of school in June, compared to now what we have now?
Yes, I can tell you exactly what it was. It was 2,248, because when the board approved the budget, Spencer gave you two different ways to approve it. One was to assume you would have some student loss. The other way was carry forward, just carry all the kids forward. So that 2,248, that's how many kids you ended the year with, and that's what you base your budget on, because you told Spencer to use the carry forward method rather than the other method, which would have had a lower number than that.
So I left my board packet at home, that's why I was doing some working here. I was looking at the Department of Ed website, the data center, and I had some figures from our first year of consolidation, 2021, and then 2122, and those numbers were always December. You know, it's not the school year, but. And then, then budgeted numbers are different than our actual ADM numbers, and so I was getting little different numbers here. December 21 to December 22, there was a loss of 62. From 22 to 23 December, there was another 67, that was 173 total. Now, if today we have 2,288, that's another 44 loss, and the estimated, if in June it was 2,248, that's 84 less than December of 2023.
Were you getting your numbers?
The Department of Ed, all their data. This is what we submit to them. So it's not that what we budgeted is, we're still losing students, because it's different than the actual numbers of ADMs that we have.
Director Sorkin, these are ADMs. I'm looking right at the screen. They're budgeted ADM. That's exactly what it is, the same numbers you use from the state. What you're talking about is what all the schools in the state of Minnesota did from the years you're describing. They lost numbers because of COVID. And we did lose students because of COVID. So did Heving, so did Mississauga East, so did St. Louis County, so did every single school in the state. So that is, yeah, and that fits, and I did say, yeah, you have lost kids for the last three years. That has stopped.
Well, according to the numbers, it hasn't, from December of last year, 2,332 till your, today. These are actual students, not budgeted students, 2,288. Now, this year alone, it's a loss of 44. The year before, it was 67. The year before, it was 62, for a total of 173 today. Two today, okay?
Can I point out, you're using numbers from December from 2022, and we're using numbers at the end of the actual school year.
Wow.
Those are not the same comparison.
I'm saying since consolidation, but even since, even since.
They're improving.
Yeah.
But listen.
You want to go in the right direction.
They really aren't. Brandy, if you understand, if the 2,248 was how we ended school last year, in June, okay, and it was 2,332 in December of 2023, or, let's see, 2021, 22, 23. You know, it's not, it can't be 23, but it's 22. So all I'm saying is, I just want to make the distinction that we can budget any number that we want, but we're still losing students.
I guess, Director Sorkin, let me ask you, if I may be so bold, why are you trying to spin a negative tail on a clear situation where we have more students? I don't understand this. What, I don't understand why you're doing this.
Do you have more students?
You're taking a different point in time, the numbers, from the numbers that we're showing here, and we projected, and we are ahead of what we projected in June.
So in following what you're saying, Polly, and what you're saying, Noel, is that from December to June, we gained the 44 extra students then? Is that what happened? That's.
From June till now.
From June till now.
June till now, okay.
Because from the time that Director Sorkin is mentioning, December, remember I said, in the high school, we always tend to lose students as the year goes on. That is what Director Sorkin is talking about. But so, but you can't take those numbers and compare them to the numbers you budgeted for, because Spencer used end of the school year. He didn't use September 2022 numbers. That's the difference. This number is just from the school day, last day of school, 2023, to the first day of school this year, you have more students.
Polly's numbers are from December.
December.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. We'll let it go.
Okay.
That's all I have for the board.
Mr. Cher, can I? When he was talking about other meetings that we have, we have MSBA this Thursday is the Fall Advocacy Tour for our area, and it's a Zoom meeting from 6:00 to 7:00, 6:30 to 7:30, and you can sign up online. And through. And through that, you can find out what MSBA's current legislative positions are. And then, at that meeting, there, there'll be discussion on where we want to go, where we don't want to go, from last year's position. And then the other date that's critical is if you want to write a resolution that will be presented at the Delegate Assembly in December, which finalizes what MSBA actually does when the legislation is in, in session. That date is September twenty-ninth, a new resolution has to be sent in by. And that's all online, and I know everybody here gets the daily or weekly MSBA email, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Just to add to that, Tim, that either a board can pass a resolution or an individual can submit to.
Correct.
And it would be probably good if we had a majority vote on some, some things to submit. Does that date, Pat, we have another board meeting before that date, Tim? As if we had a problem.
This one's the twenty-fifth.
Yes, we would.
Okay. So I just.
It's the Friday after our la- last September board meeting.
I'd be thinking if we want to submit some as a school board and as individuals, okay?
So just got it. Okay. Six point one, administrative items. Consider approval of MOU between Lakeview Behavioral Health and Rock Ridge Public Schools. I get a motion to approve that.
So moved?
By Director Riden.
Support.
By Director Lotteger. Any discussion?
I just wanted, I called Noel today regarding this, just because I, I was curious, because I also know that range mental health is coming into the schools, and this is, like Noel said, it's strictly for kids who are already established with Lakeview Behavioral Health, and it's making access easier for kids who can't get a ride to the appointments.
Okay. Any more discussion? All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Six point two, consider approval of request from the City of Gilbert for items located at the Gilbert campus. I will make a motion. Any support?
Support, Riden.
Support, Riden. Any discussion?
Couldn't our, our school use the shed? I, I don't have it here in, here, I don't have the right one, but even that shed, couldn't we use that somehow?
A shed, where?
One of the pictures was a shed.
Yeah, there was a shed.
I, I did, I thought about that as well, just, you know, I don't, I didn't know if we needed it or not. I would assume if it's on here.
Your employees are telling me they don't need the shed. They have adequate storage for some larger buildings. They can put stuff in.
And we're not selling anything anymore? We're just giving it away, or?
Which, we, this is a request. It's coming. We're going to talk about that next, about it. This is just what the City of Gilbert has asked, or we asked them to come up with a list. They walked through the building, and they are asking for these items. The only one thing, let me add on, I know that this topic came up at the other buildings. If somebody makes a request, or an entity makes a request, should we put the stuff on auction anyway and see what we can get for it in auction? Or should we just let the entity have it? Typically, so far, if it's been a nonprofit, you have tended to let those items go to the nonprofit, which I would put the City of Gilbert in that vein, because we've given items to others. The only thing I want to say is that you did get a request for some baskets from Procter, and at a pass board meeting.
Backboards.
Yep, you said, sell them through Do bid. Unfortunately, they did not all sell, and so we're trashing some backboards that somebody asked for, and you said no. And so, just, I just want to consider, consider that you do not have high demand for some of these unusual items. So, City Gilbert is asking, they're, they just want to know what you want to do.
Yeah, and I would, I would, the City of Gilbert has already got three of the six building plaques in their showcase. I would just make sure that the building plaques do not go up on the Do bid auction, that they, I think that the city might have walked by them or just weren't paying attention, and that would probably complete their showcase of the building plaques for.
And that would make sense, that we give them to the City of Gilbert.
Okay. I would hope that they, you know, that we could.
Accommodate them.
Yeah.
Yes.
Exactly. Okay.
The auditorium drapes and curtains, is there a problem? A lot of those old ones have asbestos in them?
I, there's probably some sort of fire retardant in them. I don't know.
Well, how, yeah.
How do you check?
Well, that's what I, that's what I recall, that they were, used to be made with asbestos in them, so we should probably check on that.
I would think if we're, if we're donating them to the City of Gilbert, the City of Gilbert would be responsible for looking into that, or.
That would be a hard deal. They would need to remove them, and then what they did with them, that would be up to them.
Okay. Any more discussion on six point two? The favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Six point three, consideration to move ahead with Do bid sale and excess items in the Gilbert's building.
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Dr. Yon, support by Director Lotteger. Any discussion? I'm going to say, go ahead.
I, I, I want, just want to make one thing known to the board. So, if you vote yes on this, now, you are going to get, you've already told us to get bids for demolition. Those bids, I believe, are going to come at the end of October, your second meeting for you to approve or not approve. Do what you will with them. What this is, we would like to, if the building is coming down, we would like to sell items that the public might be interested in. So if you vote yes with this, I want you to know, we have, we're going to put everything in there on the Do bid. This includes any door frames. This would include any cabinets that might be built in the wall. That's what we did with the Virginia High School. So this would be taking whatever is of value out of that building and putting it on Do bid, and hopefully, the local folks here would bid on it, and then they could bid. So this would include the kitchen equipment, what's left, everything. That would be our intent. So I want everyone to know ahead of time here what we're doing. If you say yes to this, we're going into that building, and we are going to put everything on the Do bid auction, and I mean everything that we believe is sellable, and let the public bid on it. The intent here would be that we believe we can do this fairly quickly, that we would, if you say yes, we would move ahead, start the process. We'd have the Do bid auction, and then the goal would be for all of the items that were purchased to be removed from the building by the end of October. Then, depending what the board decides at the end of October, you could continue moving forward with the demolition, or not.
And then, for previous Do bids, we've had, we've put an advertisement in the paper, and it's also correct. And then we've also had, it was posted on Facebook. I know I've shared previous Do bid auctions and stuff, so it has the opportunity to get out there into the public to let them.
We put ads in the Minneapolis Star and Tribune. We talked to commercial brokers up here. We've had a number of people go through it, some with significant money, and who have the knowledge and experience to remodel it, do something with. You don't have any, there's nobody here saying they want to buy the building.
But I'm talking about advertising, the things that's inside the building.
It's been.
We've put, we've put advertisements out about the Do bid, correct? The auction?
No, not for the Gilbert building.
Yeah.
But we, in the past.
The past, for the previous ones we have. So we would, all that same process.
It's out there in the public that people know that.
We would heavily, heavily.
Things from the building.
I say, yeah.
Okay.
I mentioned this to Noel. I mentioned it to Mr. Speltz, that the Gilbert Auditorium had a big fundraising some years ago to get all the seats reupholstered. Now, those seats that were, you know, people donated, they got their names on the back of the seats. What do we do with these auditorium seats that people donated to? I mean, there's a lot of seats.
I'm going to suggest that unless the board tells me differently, is that we make an attempt to give that seat back to whoever donated the money for the seat. If we're able to find them, locate them, we can pull those seats and move them someplace. I would think that would be the right thing to do, unless you tell me to do something differently.
I think there was a big, in the auditorium that had all the money that, all the money, all the people that gave money to redo the seats.
How many years ago was that?
Angie, you remember?
That seems like a painstaking process. I wouldn't, I mean.
It will be difficult.
Well, and I had a lot of people asking about it. I donated.
A lot of people, like, how many? Three?
No.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't spend a lot of time on that. Donations are donations.
One thing I'll say on that is, they're going to put, Do bid will put up all those seats.
Yeah.
Virginia put up all the seats, and I actually walked through the building after the Do bid people came and took. They, they probably sold out of the, I don't know, was that twelve hundred seats in that auditorium? Like forty?
Okay.
So it's, everybody talks about, I even, I even thought, I'll take a set of those and put them on the end of the dock, and I can sit out there and fish with my grandchildren. I didn't buy one.
Just the question came up, I have to let the public know what the intent. Okay.
Excuse me.
So.
Bill?
Yes.
These might not be independent also.
Okay, I don't.
I thought.
I can't remember. Most of the auditorium seats are dependent on the seat next to them, which are dependent on the seat next to them, which are dependent on the seat.
Just like the old school desks.
Okay. All right, so with six point three.
I, I got a question or two or a comment. So any, are there any things like the Lyric Center for the Arts? I mean, they, what they.
Came into Virginia and didn't take.
Oh, they didn't?
Correct.
Okay, so they.
He was probably walking.
Yeah. Just wondered if that was a case, that would be a good place for them to go, and so, in other words, this is a part auction and a part salvage thing, because like you said, you're talking about door frames and cabinets and, so, if, if there's any salvage after that, I mean, they can't really take in that amount of time. That's a heck of a lot, a lot of salvaging. I wonder what salvage is going to be left, Bill? It could be, and then there might not be time between the end of the sale and the demolition.
As much, as much. As much as I hate to say it, no one's interested in that building. We promised the people we'd take it down. We tried to sell anything of value. I mean, I mean.
Mr., it's the one thing that I, to kind of ans- answer what Polly's asking here, is railings were a big item that went in, in Virginia. All the odd doors, people came and bought doors, people, they didn't buy door frames, but Do bid puts everything out there, old lamps, all, all sorts of things, but then everything else is part of the demolition.
Right, but, yeah, so you've got two weeks to get everything out of there before the.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying. There might be more salvageable stuff, but then there's really not time.
Who's going to come and get it?
Well, there's salvage companies around. There's one in, where did I stop? In Cloquet or something?
Has anybody contacted you?
Well, no. Keep, with the Do bid auction, we're going to sell everything that.
Put a sticker on everything.
I'm just.
Yep.
And so, by the time the stuff is out, and if you saw Virginia High School when people were picking things up, it's going to be chaos for a couple of days, but that's okay. They need to pick them up. We believe we can get this done by the end of October. If you vote at the end of October to bring the building down, they might move in there fairly quickly to begin abatement.
Good. Yep.
There's a great line, pardon me, I just have to add it, the Do bid gal at Virginia said, "We put a sticker on everything. If you stand there too long, I'm going to put a sticker on."
Six point three, any more discussion? All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Meeting announcements. Our next regular meeting will be held Monday, September twenty-two, twenty-three, six o'clock here in this building. Can I get a motion?
Before you start, I just want to correct a statement I made last week, because I said I would do it. We were talking about the hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour for the ice time, and that did not include the training center, and it did not include the coaches' offices and locker rooms. However, it was stated that we were going to be paying hours that we didn't, for hours we didn't use, and that's false. We're going to be paying monthly. We're going to get billed monthly, and it's going to be for what we use.
And are we getting any credit for the hours we didn't use last year?
I'm just speaking to my statement. Because I'm inaccurate, so I just want to.
You get charged for them.
I'm not asking.
Nothing to get credited for.
Oh, so Fritz was wrong?
Yes.
He was wrong.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair.
I'll support.
My Director Riden, report by Director Yon to adjourn. All is favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Charge you for this.